I would like to call this order of the Festus City Council, uh, this meeting of the Festus City Council to order. Roll call please.
Councilman Boyer.
Here.
Councilman Collier.
Here.
Councilman Vins.
Here.
Councilman Cook is absent. Councilwoman Templeton.
Here.
Councilman Weiner.
Here.
Councilman Tenon.
Here.
Councilman Dennis is absent.
We do have a quorum. Pleasure of allegiance.
Our pleasure allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Tonight's bills total five hundred and eighty-two thousand, two hundred and forty-one dollars and forty-six cents. So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Roll call please.
Councilman Collier.
Yes.
Councilman Vins.
Yes.
Councilwoman Templeton.
Yes.
Councilman Weiner.
Yes.
Councilman Tenon.
Yes.
Councilman Boyer.
Yes.
Motion passes. The consent agenda has passed. Remarks of visitors.
She did not come.
We do not have, uh, Ms. Pippen did not show up, so. Moving right along, we'll go right into bids. The demolition, uh, demolition of six fifty-seven West Main Street. Could I have a, uh, staff report, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Um, we did solicit bids. Um, the ad and all the corresponding responses are, uh, part of your packet. We received, uh, three bids, uh, the low bid from Exterior Creations for twenty-three-nine, Smith and Sons for twenty-four-seven-fifty, and True Home at sixty-nine-six-thirty. Exterior Creations also included a price with tree removal. Um, this would require an amendment to the bu- uh, general fund budget, uh, just as it did with the property purchased. Uh, but we do recommend, uh, the Exterior Creations, uh, bid on a not-to-exceed contract for thirty-eight thousand. That would include the demolition of the home and cleanup, possible abatement, uh, which is included in the proposal there, uh, and the tree removal. Uh, happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the bid of Exterior Creations for a net contract of not to exceed thirty-eight thousand.
So moved.
Motion's been made and seconded. Roll call please.
Councilman Collier.
Yes.
Councilman Vins.
Yes.
Councilwoman Templeton.
Yes.
Councilman Weiner.
Yes.
Councilman Tenon.
Yes.
Councilman Boyer.
Yes.
Motion passes. Let's demo that building. Tonight for ordinances and resolutions, I have bill number four-seven-seven-six on the agenda. Would the clerk please read the bill for the first time?
Bill number four-seven-seven-six, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Festus, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to enter into and execute a contract with Exterior Creations for demolition and site cleanup of the property at six fifty-seven West Main Street, incorporating said contract and bid proposal as part of this ordinance and establishing an effective date.
Bill forty-seven-seventy-six is now open for discussion, although we just got done discussing it. Is there, is there any other discussion?
That start. They give a time?
Once we advise them, uh, that they've been awarded a contract, we discuss it at that time.
Is there any councilman that would like this, uh, bill four-seven-seven-six placed on the agenda for the next meeting? Hearing none, do I have a motion to suspend the rules and read bill forty-seven-seventy-six for the second time in title only?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Hearing none, motion carries. Madam Clerk, would you please read bill forty-seven-seventy-six for the second time?
Bill number forty-seven-seventy-six, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Festus, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to enter into and execute a contract with Exterior Creations for demolition and site cleanup of the property at six fifty-seven West Main Street, incorporating said contract and bid proposal as part of this ordinance and establishing an effective date. Councilman Boyer.
Yes.
Councilman Collier.
Yes.
Councilman Vins.
Yes.
Councilwoman Templeton.
Yes.
Councilman Weiner.
Yes.
Councilman Tenon.
Yes.
Bill forty-seven-seventy-six has passed. Next, we have bill forty-seven-seventy-seven on the agenda. Would the clerk please read the bill for the first time?
Bill number forty-seven-seventy-seven, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Festus, Missouri, closing a portion of Bearing Street to vehicular traffic for the purpose of providing pedestrian access and establishing an effective date.
Bill forty-seven, forty-seven-seventy-seven is now open for discussion. Could I have a staff report, please?
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. As we discussed, uh, at a previous meeting, um, with the proposed, um, reconstruction of the South Second parking lot, uh, this is uh, to provide, uh, a full width of pedestrian access, uh, from South Second to Main Street, uh, with the closure of the area that's highlighted in the exhibit, uh, which is essentially off the four corners of the two adjacent buildings, um, and allow for, uh, full ADA accessibility, uh, from South Second up onto Main Street.
Very good question. Um, with, with that, uh, project not happening soon or in the relatively near future, can we keep that open until that the project was?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, I think, I think, uh, how we stage it, uh, will be determined, you know, once we get the contractor on board, but this, this allows us to fully prepare a set of plans, uh, that we can then put out, uh, put out for bid, and that's a conversation that will probably won't be happening until fall.
Okay, there you go. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Being there's no further discussion, are there any council members that wish this bill to be carried over to the next meeting? Hearing none, do I have a motion to suspend the rules and read bill, bill forty-seven-seventy-seven for the second time in title only?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Hearing none, motion carries. Madam Clerk, would you please read bill forty-seven-seventy-seven for the second time?
Bill forty-seven-seventy-seven, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Festus, Missouri, closing a portion of Bearing Street to vehicular traffic for the purpose of providing pedestrian access and establishing an effective date. Councilman Vins.
Yes.
Councilwoman Templeton.
Yes.
Councilman Weiner.
Yes.
Councilman Tenon.
Yes.
Councilman Boyer.
Yes.
Councilman Collier.
Yes.
Bill forty-seven-seventy-seven has passed. And also on the agenda for tonight is bill forty-seven-seventy-eight. Would the clerk please read the bill for the first time?
Bill number forty-seven-seventy-eight, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Festus, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to execute a third amended agreement between the City of Festus, Missouri and Gregory Camp as city administrator and establishing an effective date.
Staff report, please.
I'm going to defer to the city attorney.
This ordinance will amend the, uh, employment contract that you have with Greg and serve as the city administrator, uh, vice for additional compensation and additional vacation time, uh, that has been, uh, recommended by that council. And this will be the, I think there's, it has been amended twice before, so it's solid as a third amendment. So we're stuck with him for a while.
Is there any discussion? Is there any council member that would like this bill carried over to the next meeting? Hearing none, do I have a motion to suspend the rules and read bill forty-seven-seventy-eight for the second time in title only?
So moved. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Hearing none, motion carries. Madam Clerk, would you please read bill forty-seven-seventy-eight for the second time?
Bill number forty-seven-seventy-eight, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Festus, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to execute a third amended agreement between the City of Festus, Missouri and Gregory Camp as city administrator and establishing an effective date. Councilman Boyer.
Yes.
Councilman Collier.
Yes.
Councilman Vins.
Yes.
Councilwoman Templeton.
Yes.
Councilman Weiner.
Yes.
Councilman Tenon.
Yep.
Bill forty-seven-seventy-eight has passed. Moving. Moving right along. New business. Festival request, bottleneck Bridge Ride on August eleventh, twenty-twenty-four.
Mayor, member of the council, thank you very much for having me. Uh, I will say that a little bit of snickering and giggling and then me getting called up here was some little bit unnerving, but, uh, I'll just, uh, inside joke. So, um, anyway, thank you for having me. I'm here to, on behalf of the Jefferson County Growth Association, to once again request the closure of Main Street on August eleventh, starting at ten PM on the night of the tenth for setup between Mill Street and Palier, and then on the eleventh for the duration of the day till five PM. As you know, the bottleneck Bridge Ride is our annual event that is truly to promote tourism to the city and as well to the county. Last year, we had over four hundred and thirty-nine cyclists, uh, come in town. So if you were down there, you saw a sea of lycra and spandex all up and down Main Street, and they travel throughout the county. So what's our, our longest route last year was cut short because of some poor weather. But everybody still had a great time, and then the clouds divided before we had to call anything else, but we had a wonderful day. Um, and again, being able to have Main Street as our start and finish is kind of the flagship of the event. And then also, once again, request uh, to have the, uh, mayor lead car, um, as a part of this as well. That's always been a big hit to help with the safety of the cyclists as they come from Main Street, cross sixty-one, sixty-seven into Crystal before they embark on their, their journey. So, uh, once again, it is just a request for this ninth year of this event that's taken place, which I'm pretty ecstatic about. Next year, it's going to be even more exciting, but for our ninth year to request, uh, the closure of Main Street, uh, for that event. And I'm open for any questions, and we're even taking early registrations. So if anybody wants to register tonight, you're more than welcome. Sixty-seven miles is easy on a bike.
Make it one mile.
We do have a strider race. It goes up and down. We have, so I can go back. We have a fourteen-mile family race or family ride. We have a kids' race that'll go up and down Main Street. We're also doing a bike rodeo this year for kids' safety and helmet fitting. So kids can come down there if they have a bike, but they don't have a helmet, they'll be able to get a helmet for free with the Optimus Club in Twin Cities is going to do that. And then we have a, uh, thirty-four, forty-two, and sixty-seven mile route, uh, that people will be embarking on. And then with loud, with, uh, live music, uh, we'll have a lot going on on Main Street, uh, throughout the day up until the, uh, end of it, which will, um, put it back to better than how it began about five PM on Sunday, as we did last year.
How many people of that four hundred finished that sixty-seven mile?
About a hundred.
About?
It's usually about a hundred. It kind of breaks into thirds or breaks into court, when it breaks into quarters, you get about a hundred at the, at the head out to La Chance is the farthest point. And then, um, the forty-two and the thirty-four take up the lion's share of everything, but, uh, the nice thing is, is we have SAG support for the event. So if somebody embarks on sixty-seven and they get to a certain point and they're like, you know what? It's flatter on the map around Jefferson County. I think I'm going to have to call the bike, call in an extraction. They can do so. We have an app that our riders will download called Track Central. So if they're in the middle of Mother's Head Road in DeSoto, which is one of the roads that we're on, they have a flat and there's no one else around them. They can call and say, hey, I have a flat by using their app, and it'll pinpoint exactly where they're at. So any of our vans that we have go around, uh, we have, uh, uh, shortwave radio team that helps us out as well. But, uh, yeah, we have a lot of people that will embark on it and then end up going, I've never been down to Jefferson County or I haven't been here for a while, and there's a lot of hills and that takes a lot out of it.
Oh, I've, I've seen them, you know, drive around. See, yeah, man, there's a lot of bikes.
It's, uh, four hundred and thirty-nine last year came out, and we were truly thrilled that we had that type of turnout. And this year, with, uh, the increase in marketing that we were able to get from the Tourism Commission, uh, to be able to do digital marketing, because eighty, about eighty percent of our participants come from outside of any zip code in Jefferson County. So then we'll be able to market further out. And last year, our, our furthest cyclist came purposefully from around the Denver area. They had family that lived here, so they came in town for the weekend, uh, to come ride, so.
With Pedal to the Cause coming onboard, that means you're able to market through them as well.
So they were a part of it last year, and there'll be a tent of it this year, but they, we're not an official training ride for them as we were last year, and that did not bring as much as we had hoped. We have Bike MS, we'll have Pedal, Pedal to the Cause will be, um, a part of it, and even there's a Hero's Ride that, uh, if they want to set up a tent that's in Columbia, Illinois coming up, that people will come, and, uh, we kind of help cross-promote everybody's events, uh, as we do these things, so.
So what else, uh, we'd be having on Main Street during that day, Andy?
We have live music. We'll have, um, we're promoting all the dining uh, up and down the street. We're promoting the shops to be open. Um, the live music that we have will start at eleven and will end about four, four-thirty. And last year, that kept a hundred plus people on Main Street the entire day, and then we had probably another hundred that were coming and going to watch people as they came and went. And this year, we're trying to help promote so we can get more people on Main Street, uh, to see the artists and to see the cyclists come in. I mean, it's, uh, it's kind of a neat thing to see them take off in the morning at eight AM, and it's even cooler to see when they start coming back, returning, and you can kind of, you know, you can tell how either happy or, uh, sad on the decision that they made when they were out there, but, um, Maiden and Mill's been really good about being able to, they're going to do some dining outside, and then we're promoting to the brick in front of the Four Brothers and all the restaurants and all the businesses that they will open up that people can come in town and they can shop, dine, uh, have, bring their kids down after mass and then have stuff for the kid.
That's great. I mean, that's such a, a big draw. I mean, you'll probably have five hundred riders this year, you know, approximately.
I, I think we're looking at five to five-fifty.
Yeah.
Before we had last year, and the weather played a big part last year. Uh, last year, as we began, there was a black cloud, um, right over Festus. And then, so we canceled at five AM, we canceled the sixty-seven mile route, but, um, like in the movie Bagger Vance, they said God likes to see his children at play. So then the, the clouds dispersed, and then it was a beautiful afternoon, and we were there until four-thirty or so in the afternoon, so, um.
That's cool. And, and then what, uh, Councilwoman Templeton was talking about about Pedal to the Cause too. I mean, that's a fantastic organization. They are, uh, based up at Barnes. I've ridden for them. I've raised money for them. They're beyond legit. I mean, it's just, uh, a, a wonderful organization. So to even have them associated with this is a, is a huge deal.
And that's, uh, and that's kudos to Trailnet. Trail, that's who we partner with, and they do this for a living. So they come in and they just, they really run a, a tip-top show, and, um, they're really top-notch to partner up with this to make sure that the riders are safe. They're hydrated, they're fed throughout the way, and then it's, um, usually, uh, all the routes are marked very clearly, and it's just really nice when they, people get done, they come back and say, A, we didn't know that this kind of scenery when everything was down here in south. Um, we were the furthest south ride that Trailnet ever had taken on until they got to the gravel ride that they do in St. Jen. So we're the furthest south, like, road ride, uh, that they have, and some of the scenery is just unbeatable, and that's the comments that we hear from people is the, um, the appreciation of the community, people getting out of their cars and their houses and cheering them on as they're climbing hills like Brat in DeSoto and, you know, even Crystal Heights. Um, sure, you know, and there's, there's a lot of hills, and we get a lot of community that comes out and cheers them on, and I think that's really cool when people come back and tell us.
That's great. Thank you, Andy.
Welcome.
Electric bikes are welcome.
Electric bikes are welcome. Yes, uh, we have, there's a, we had about, I think, four percent of the ride.
Of it, bud.
I think four percent of the riders last year had, um, somewhere like three to four percent had e-bikes. And, uh, so, yeah, they're out there. Oh, yeah. They're not, it's, they're easy.
So fast, he's not moving his feet.
I would, I own the downhill on riding. I don't get so much on the uphill. Takes me a little longer. But people that get on the e-bikes, I mean, there's still a lot of work with a lot of e-bikes. Not, not all of them just have a throttle to go.
Right.
There's a lot of work to them, but they, they enjoy it, and, uh, it's a good thing to have them. Any other questions?
Is there any other discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the, uh, closing of Main Street for bottleneck Bridge Ride on the eleventh of August.
So moved. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. Hearing none, motion carries. And by the way, Andy, you do a great job with that, uh, whole program, and, uh, thank you very much for your participation. Next thing for new business, we have a, um, liquor request for La Chance Winery on the twenty-third of June, twenty-twenty-four. That is for the Tanglefoot Art Walk. Do we have anybody to talk on this?
He's not here, but he is waiting on his state license. Um, so that'll be included in this application for the event.
Is there any discussion?
If this is on the twenty-third of June?
Mm-hmm.
How, uh, I mean, is he going to have time to be able to get this passed if he's not even here and he doesn't have the paperwork?
It would be pending. And we can grant our approval conditionally. We could grant our condition, our, our approval conditionally, uh, on him getting his, his licensing through the state.
Yeah, he did email me this morning and said he is still, he's already submitted the paperwork through the state, but he wanted to go ahead and get this approved, so he didn't run out of time with us.
If I recall, he was part of last year's art walk.
Now, is he going to be set up in a certain spot, I guess?
Yeah. I couldn't, I couldn't tell. I don't know if it's in the app.
I, as, as Tanglefoot Art Walk, I guess they go up and down Main Street, people?
Yes.
Then he is, he is there. I don't see any problem.
Is there any other discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve a, uh, to approve the liquor license for La Chance Vineyards on a condition that he gets his state license.
So moved.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. Hearing none, motion carries. Old business.
Uh, we have none on the agenda, but something I wanted to mention, uh, and if we need to, we can make it an agenda item at our next meeting, or if council would like to act on it, uh, tonight. Um, July fifth is on a Friday. Uh, July fourth is on a Thursday. Um, in the past, when we've had these situations where, uh, the fourth has happened in close proximity to the weekend, I believe it was a few years ago, uh, that we've, uh, council has granted, uh, the extra day. Um, just wanted you to consider it, and you don't have to take action on it tonight. Um, but I can, I can make sure it's an agenda item, uh, on our, uh, agenda for the twenty-fourth, if you like, or again, if council wants to take action this evening, they can as well.
Any discussion? I'll entertain a motion to approve that request.
So moved.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. Okay, let's do a roll call vote.
Councilman Collier.
Yes.
Councilman Vins.
Yes.
Councilwoman Templeton.
Yes.
Councilman Weiner. Councilman Tenon.
Yes.
Councilman Boyer.
Yes.
Motion carries. There we go.
Thank you.
And once again, I agree with these sorts of things because having spent a good amount of time in the, uh, employment of the United States Marine Corps and underneath the, the guidelines of the federal government, uh, if holidays turned out on Thursday, we generally got Friday off also. So I'm happy with that. Thank you. Anything else for old business? Councilman Boyer.
Hey, I just wanted to say that the, uh, mayor's cruise seemed like it went quite well, um, lot, good participation, and down at the library, there was, uh, quite a few cars. Uh, a lot of compliments on the dash plaques. Looked good. Um, wanted to thank the, uh, street department, Mike, and you guys, uh, for getting out the, uh, coal mix to put at the entrances. That helped out substantially. Held up good, too. Um, and, uh, once again, the new pickle bar, ball courts over there are looking awesome. Uh, yeah. All we need is what the striping on it, and I think they'll be finished. Uh, it really looks good. Lights all up, fencing, everything is looking good. So that's all I have, sir.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Weiner.
Just a couple of things. Um, you know, on the pickleball courts, um, I talked to the, um, what I would refer to as the god of pickleball via my, uh, phone, and there is a little discrepancy on the, uh, on the centering on those, so we'll, we'll address that as, as that comes up, and we'll, I'm sure we'll be able to make that right if that's a problem. Um, congratulations, uh, Chief Wendell, on, on thirty years of service to the, uh, city. And, um, twenty-nine, twenty-nine and, and counting, okay? And Mark Harris, who isn't here also, were for twenty-five years of service, so, um, it's just like with, with Greg and, uh, his contract that, um, has been renewed and, and, um, edited or changed a little bit. We, uh, we have quality people here in our organization, and the number of years that you've served and, um, along with Mark, you know, show Joe just how important that is, and and then for the city council to, uh, to take action with Greg, that just further keeps quality people here, as Councilwoman Templeton brought up last time. So we, uh, we thank everybody for that service. Um, Mike, thank you also for getting to that project so quickly on the potholes on, I think it's Southwest Wood there, Drive. And, uh, that was, that was really, well, it was really, really needed, and, uh, you responded in a matter of days to get that finished. So thank you. Thank you for doing that also. Um, the Edgewood Project, happy to see that continuing to, to go so well. And, um, that's about all I have, so.
All right. Thank you, sir. Councilman Collier.
Uh, first off, I'd like to, um, find out how our employees are doing since that incident we had, uh, the other day. Are they pretty much, the conditions of them, are they pretty much recovering and?
There, as far as that goes, they're all doing pretty well. Um, couple of them did have some lingering, um, concerns, but they've gotten past those, so I believe everybody's on the right track right now.
Okay, just as long as we were able to take care of all the problems.
Several different avenues for counseling and everything else. Some of them took advantage of it. Some of them chose not to, but, uh, I do believe they're all in a good place right now.
Okay, that's good. Um, yeah, the, uh, celebration coming up on, uh, June twenty-one through twenty-three. Uh, the twenty-first, they're going to have a meet and greet at the American Legion. The twenty-second, they're going to have a dance at the American Legion. And then the twenty-third, there's going to be a church service at Bearden Church and a picnic at the Ron Harrington Pavilion, and it'd be nice if we'd all show our support. And uh, go, go to uh, at least one of these. That's the Juneteenth celebration. And I'd also like to thanks all of our staff for all the updates we've been getting. That's really good to kind of let us know what's going on, so when we do get calls, we have uh, answers to them. So that's all I have, sir.
All righty, Councilwoman Templeton.
Just a few things. On this picnic application and some of these others we see, can you add a line on here or a box that says, is this a repeat event?
Well, yeah.
Because that way we have an idea of kind of where it came from, where it's going. Um, and the other thing I had was for Chief Wendell. I had somebody ask me if there was any updates or concern or it, anything over the new church we talked about before.
We have still not received a single call over there. So as far as we, we're concerned, there's no issues as of right now.
And the other thing I had was a compliment for Michelle. Thank you for making your report so easy to read. I'm a numbers geek. So I like that I can look right at it and know exactly what I'm looking, and it's broken out to enough detail, but I'm not drowning in it. So I very much appreciate that, so thank you. So do I. That's, that's a good thing. That's all.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Vins.
Nothing at this time, sir.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Tenon.
Uh, just a little bit of information for everybody. So, so uh, to give you guys an idea about pickleball, the uh, um, I think it was uh, my, my wife is a tennis coach at Festus, and she got an email from uh, the head coach at jury, uh, college jury, is that university or college?
Yeah, down Springfield.
Yeah. And anyhow, they are starting a pickleball. Um, they're, they're, they're adding pickleball to their agenda, and uh, uh, they were asking my wife to send them names of tennis players so they can actually get scholarships to play pickleball.
As a collegiate sport.
Yep.
That's awesome.
Yep. Uh, I think uh, I think they might be one of the first in Missouri, but I'm not a hundred percent on that. Uh, so I thought that was pretty interesting, and uh, so, so basically, it's going to give uh, the kids in Festus a, uh, probably a greater opportunity to get a full ride uh, playing pickleball. Because, you know, because they just want names. That's what they want, and they say tick, pickle, tennis players blend right in, and so that's kind of a good deal. The other thing is uh, uh, I was on Main Street for the car cruise or for the mayor's cruise, and uh, uh, we got a little bit of rain, but it still turned out really nice, and I don't think there was any injuries, so that's good. So I have.
Well, I uh, I enjoyed the um, the cruise and the car show. I didn't bring my Mustang out because the weather looked like it was going to rain.
Some people brought their classics out.
And some people brought their classics out. Yes, thank you. But I did drive my truck anyway. But uh, we need a closed session, right?
Yes, we do.
I don't have anything else. Uh, I will entertain a motion to go into closed session in accordance with or pursuant to section six, ten point zero two one of the revised statutes of Missouri for the purpose of discussing legal actions, causes of action, or privileged communications between the council and legal counsel.
So moved. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilman Tenon.
Yes.
Councilman Boyer.
Yes.
Councilman Collier.
Yes.
Councilman Vins.
Yes.
Councilwoman Templeton.
Yes.
Councilman Weiner.
Yes.